You can just tell her, you can just go up to her.
Okay, welcome everybody. We're gonna convene the meeting and if you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whoops, almost fell off my chair. Welcome, everybody. We had no closed session tonight and no ceremonial matters or presentations. So I'd like to ask for approval of the final agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Eklund and seconded by Councilmember Lukin to approve the final agenda. If you could please call roll.
Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Eklund?
Aye.
Councilmember Lukin?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Friday?
Aye.
And Mayor Athas?
Aye, that's a five zero vote. And now we're gonna go to our three-minute council member reports and our city manager. I'm gonna start with our city manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor Athas and council. I'm gonna keep it very brief tonight and just mention that I've really appreciated working with council member, well, as mayor, Mayor Athas over the last year. It's been really great. Twenty seventeen was great, but I'm really looking forward to twenty eighteen as well. I think that there's a lot of positive things in store for the city of Nevada. So that's all I have for tonight. I'm gonna turn it back over to the council.
Thank you very much. And with that, I'm gonna start with councilmember Eklund.
I just wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays and a great twenty eighteen.
Wonderful. And councilmember Drew?
I have nothing to report, but best wishes to everyone.
We need to make sure that we turn these on when we're speaking.
I have nothing to report, but I wish to wish happy holidays to everyone. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much. And Mayor Protam Friday?
I have no formal report. Good to see everyone and look forward to this evening.
And councilmember Lukin?
Yeah, just a super brief report because we did have a TAM board meeting this past week. Main update to share is that over the past many months, an expenditure plan advisory committee has been meeting to look at the renewal of TAM. They have come back and unanimously were in favor of renewing TAM sales tax at the half cent as it has been. So the next step is to start bringing information back to the local jurisdiction. So we will be receiving an update here at a future council meeting. And also they will continue to do some polling. No decision has been made yet, but it's just continuing the outreach and education process. So we'll be hearing more in the new year.
Wonderful. And I'm gonna hold my comments because I'm gonna be making comments shortly. And with that, we're gonna move on to public comments. And this is for items that are not on our agenda. We're gonna have an opportunity to speak on the agenda item tonight, which is the reorganization. But first, I believe we do have some comments here from, the first one is with Bill Johnson. And we have the podium over there and I believe the microphone is on. Is that correct, Terry?
That is correct.
Hello, Bill. How are you?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I just wanted to stop.
Is the microphone on?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can. Good.
I just wanted to say thank you very much for the Christmas gratitude and the support that you have shown the employees. I wanted to say that we are so appreciative of that and that it has been a while. And I just wanted to come in personally and thank you each one of you. And from all the employees that cannot be here, a great well. Thanks and a merry holiday.
Oh, that's wonderful. Well, you all deserve it, definitely. Keith Brandt, and that's followed by Rod Crow.
Hi.
Hello.
How you doing? I just wanted to echo, I came down also like Bill from the courtyard to, wanted to thank you guys. And Terry, it was greatly appreciated and we're looking forward to two thousand and eighteen.
Oh, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Rod Crow? Hi, Rod.
Hi. So my name's Rod Crow. I work Public Works Department, Maintenance. And I'm here to represent the workers of the Maintenance Division in saying thank you for the bonus and making that happen. They all talk about it in a very positive way and it's much appreciated.
Oh, that's very nice. Thank you very much. And the last card for general business is Matt. Are you performing tonight?
Yes, Courtney couldn't make it. She sends her regrets. Well, ladies and gentlemen, would you please participate with me as I do a special Christmas poem? And this is a Texas, Louisiana, Mississippi version of the Christmas poem. And it goes like this. You're no dasher and dancer and prancer and vitzin', Comet and Cupid and Donner and Nixon. But do you recall the most famous gator of all? Rudolph the red snout gator had a very shiny snout. And if you ever saw it, you would even call and shout. All of the other gators used to snap and call him names. They'll never let by Rudolph join any gator games. Then on swampy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say, Rudolph, with your snout so bright, won't you guide my boat tonight? Then how the gators loved him, thought he tasted very fine. Rudolph the red snout gator, thought he tasted finer than wine.
Thank you, Matt.
Yay, Matt!
Happy holidays, Matt.
God bless each and every one of you. I hope all of you have a very merry Christmas and do have a happy and prosperous new year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Matt. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to us during this public comment time? Seeing none, I'm gonna bring it back to council for the approval of the consent calendar.
I'll vote the consent calendar.
Thank you. It's been moved by councilmember Eklund and seconded by councilmember Lukin to approve the consent calendar. And Terry, if you could please call roll.
Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Eklund?
Aye.
Councilmember Lukin?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Friday?
Aye.
And Mayor Athas?
Aye, that's a five zero vote. All right. So we are gonna, there's no public hearings, so we're moving on to general business. And I'm gonna ask if there's anybody who wishes to speak for public comment on this item. I don't have any cards. Alrighty then. Seeing none. This is what J four is reorganize the council pursuant to the local district election on November seventh, twenty seventeen, to officially swear in re-elected council members Denise Athas and Pat Eklund, recognize outgoing mayor, nominate and select the mayor for a one-year term, provide a ceremonial swearing-in of the new mayor, and nominate and select a mayor pro tempore for a one-year term. So with that, I'm gonna ask our city clerk, Terry Gillen, if she would like to conduct the oath of office for the re-elected council members. And we're just gonna stay behind the podium here. Okay? So are we supposed to stand?
Yes, if you could please stand.
Both of us or no?
Both of us.
Oh, both.
Unless you don't choose to accept.
Oh, no. Not at all. Yeah, if you can please both stand and raise your right hand or just, please.
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay. And please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Pat Eklund.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties upon
Discharge the duties upon
Which I'm about to enter
Which I'm about to enter.
As a Nevada city council member.
As a Nevada city council member.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I borrow your pen? Thank you. All right. So before we go forward, I have some words as being almost the past mayor for this last year. So I want to thank my colleagues for giving me the opportunity for the second time to serve as mayor this past year. Although the title doesn't come with any more authority than the rest of the council, it does come with extra duties such as running the meetings, acting as spokesperson at events, cutting ribbons and speaking with many residents and businesses about their needs, giving out proclamations and the like. I learned a lot this year about our city and I just wanted to showcase some of the highlights. We now have ownership of the lead property off Hill Road and a possible future community garden area and park. We approved a budget for improvements at the Hill Recreation Center, visited BioMarin and Ultragenics and forged a wonderful relationship with the Buck Institute. Our Nevada birthday party on January nineteenth is actually gonna be held there this year. Our municipal buildings went deep green with MCE and we got a sustainability coordinator. Bringing in the downtown streets team, it's been a successful program. And the success of the program can actually show measurements of seven homeless getting jobs and ten of them getting housing. Although those aren't large numbers, it's a start for helping people and getting the homeless off the streets, giving them dignity through work and extending a helpful hand. Next, we're gonna have the meter program and a mobile care shower unit pilot program. Seeing the start of the smart transportation and seeing its success, getting funding for the downtown smart station, and we instituted quiet zones. Worked on environmental groups, with the environmental groups to pass the urban growth boundary, and we protected our hillsides. Worked with the Nevada Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Nevada Business Association to help improve our business communities. Also established a wonderful relationship with our Coast Guard, attending several events at the Admiral's home. We closed escrow on the Hamilton Hospital and approved an assisted living and memory care facility while also restoring a historic building. We also saw approval of Oakmont assisted living units on Nevada Boulevard near the Quest Church. And we're gonna be seeing that these help our older adult communities stay where they live and where their family is. We had some great opening events this year. The Bay Club Stone Tree Driving Range, the Biogas facility at the Redwood landfill, the Cooley Quarry Local Soul Project, the Habitat for Humanity Project, the Greek Festival, and the Sutter Hospital Fund for Breast Care for disadvantaged women. But we also saw our challenges. We started the year with many managerial staff either retiring or accepting other jobs, but we saw a wonderful team put together by our city manager, come together to work so hard for our community. I want to thank staff for taking on so many extra jobs to get the job done during those times. We sat, I sat on a committee with Congressman Huffman to deal with the ICE issues, deportation and fears facing our immigrant communities, went to forums in regards to dealing with those fears and watched our community come together and support. The benefits of that was meeting with many different religious groups and cultures, the Vietnamese Buddhists, the Muslim community, the Ismaalis, the Baha'i faith, the Greek church and Jewish community, and we learned about their cultures and communities. The Highway thirty-seven closure and flooding challenges for many, had many people in Nevada have troubles during the torrential rains. But we saw our Public Works Department and staff go above and beyond to help make improvements to avoid the same thing from happening again. We watched our community come together to celebrate the life of Stacy Etchenberg, who tragically died in the Las Vegas shooting. But our community joined together and healed together. And the devastating fires brought out much strength in our community. The interfaith communities came together and instantly had places for victims up north to come to, to eat, to sleep, and be safe. I saw a measure of caring and concern and selflessness that was inspiring and I was so proud of our community. Our staff and emergency operations center was up and running within hours of the disaster and deserved kudos for their management and skills. And I want to thank all our first responders, our police department and our fire department for everything that they did during that time. But what I really learned is that our city is resilient, it's caring, it's resourceful, and it's ready for anything. Although we have our strategic goals and plans for each day, something may happen that always make us have to change course. But our residents have become more engaged, which is a great thing to see. We have new faces and a demographic of our younger residents and families getting involved and caring about their children and their children's future. It's refreshing and welcome to see. I want to thank all our management and staff, our commissions, my colleagues on the council, my husband George, and mostly the residents for all you do to make the city the best it can be. Thank you for allowing me to serve you. I'm humbled by being able to work with such great people. I know Josh is gonna be a wonderful mayor and look forward to working with him and the rest of the council. And I hope you all have a wonderful holiday season. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now, something you've been waiting for. Drum roll, please. No, I'm just kidding. And now we're gonna have the reorganization of the council. So with that, I would like to nominate Josh Friday as our next mayor. Second, it's been moved by Mayor Athas and seconded by councilmember Eklund to have Josh Friday be the mayor for the coming year. And with that, if you could please call roll.
Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Eklund?
Aye.
Councilmember Lukin?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Friday?
Aye.
Mayor Athas?
Aye. Five zero vote. Congratulations. Okay, and then we are gonna have the swearing-in, the ceremonial swearing-in?
Well, I need to first, I'd like to make a motion to
We're gonna do that after. We have it all here. We can do it now, if you want.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for Pam Drew to be a mayor pro temp.
Okay, second. Okay, it's been moved by councilmember Eklund and seconded by mayor, I'm still confused. Who am I now? Mayor Athas.
You're sitting in the mayor's seats.
To approve Pam Drew as mayor pro temp. And if you could call roll, please.
Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Eklund?
Aye.
Councilmember Lukin?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Friday?
Aye.
Mayor Athas?
Aye. Okay, that's a five zero vote. Congratulations. All right. And now that you've accepted this position, we're gonna ask you to ask your appointed person to get sworn in.
Yes, thank you very much. And if Mary Jane Burke, if you wanna come up?
Testing, testing.
Yeah, you're gonna have to please.
Great, so, testing, testing. Is this working? It's working. So I just wanna say
Is that on?
Right to your mouth.
Testing, one, two, three.
I just wanna say a couple of things. My name's Mary Jane Burke and I am here as a, thank you, as a long time friend, I'll say, of Josh Friday. And I was lucky enough to get to know Josh in his younger years, as in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, so hold that thought. It was a long time ago. But I want you to know something about this man. From his earliest days, he was curious. He was interested. He was always in action, right? He was one of those kids that you couldn't help but notice. Not because he was always doing the right things, by the way, but he was like that kid. And to see him today, to see his dad, I mean, to see, to see his dad, to know that here he stands in our community, about to be our mayor, with his beautiful wife, right, and with Shay and Tam and Cal here. I want you to know it's such, it is such and Tam and Cal here, I want you to know it's such, it is such a privilege to watch someone from this community start out, grow up, have the opportunities that we all want for all the children and to indeed be our mayor. So I can't tell you how excited I am to swear you in. All right, so you're going to raise your right hand and when I say aye, you're going to insert your name, right? Do you have that part? Okay, aye.
Aye.
Your name. I love that. Look at him. Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
For the Constitution, oh, true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
As the newly appointed mayor...
As the newly appointed mayor.
Of the City of Nevada.
Of the City of Nevada.
It's, huh? Let's get through the script.
Well, thank you. Can I, does the mic work? Are we still down?
No, you're fine on your mic.
Okay, we can hear you well. Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mary Jane Burke, for doing that. It means so much to me. Not only am I a product of Marin County Schools to which you run and have given me the foundation to achieve so much and do so much, which I'm truly grateful for, but you've always been a friend, a mentor and a disciplinarian to me personally. Thank you for not sharing those stories and you've probably known me longer than any adult in this room other than my parents. So I'm so grateful to you for everything you've done for me. Thank you, Mary Jane Burke. So before I say just a few words, as I start my term in mayor, you guys heard a long list from former Mayor Athas of everything that we've accomplished in Nevada. And the truth is, she could have talked for another half an hour about the things that she's accomplished and the things that she's done. And for everything that you have done and you've led our city and all the compassion that you showed for homeless people and for the environment and for senior citizens and for veterans, you have won major karma points. And you've also won the respect and the adoration and the gratitude of this entire community. And for that, we're so grateful. I think all of us hope that, we always like to say, you know, we want to leave this planet a little bit better than we found it. And Denise Athas can say without a doubt that the city is stronger than the day she took office and we have so much to be thankful for her too. And for that, we want to share with you firstly is flowers. Thank you so much.
They're bigger than you.
They are bigger than you. And then we have a plaque for you.
Oh, beautiful.
Yeah, you get a gavel. You can use it at home. And this is, this is, it says, it says Mayor Denise Athas, City of Nevada 2017. And this is to be shared with your husband, George.
Absolutely.
Who, as we know, was with you every single step of the way and was a huge part of the success that you and the city had this last year.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, now I get to use this. Well, thank you all so much for coming. I'm very grateful to have you here. I'm very grateful to my colleagues on the council for giving me this opportunity to serve and I'm thankful for my friends and family who are here. I'm especially thankful for my wife and family over there, my three kids who are, serve with me, I don't know where the kids, you probably hear them somewhere in the back. My three boys, right there, and my wife and my mother and my, who serve every single meeting, every single day and every single minute of this responsibility with me. So thank you. My parents for having me. We appreciate that, very grateful for that. And grateful for everyone who's here, who's a part of this community. As I start my service as mayor and as I start this term, I'm cognizant of and I think it's worth acknowledging the special time that we're in and the challenges that we have as a country and acknowledging the fact that we do live in a time of deep political division and anxiety. And it doesn't matter what party you're in, there's political insecurity, there's social insecurity, there's economic insecurity, all over. And what gives me hope, what gives me optimism about tomorrow and about our future and what inspires me is seeing how this council and this community has responded over the last two years. And we could all be very, very proud of that and should be proud of that. And what do I mean by that? What I mean is we have led by our values despite what has happened and what is happening. We continue to lead by our values. When the national government cuts back on climate protections or divests in clean investment, this council chose to lead by hiring a full-time sustainability officer to wake up every single day and make this community more sustainable and to fight climate change. This council decided to become the first city, the City of Nevada, to commit to 100% clean energy at that time. And when we have a national government who is giving away public lands for corporate profit, this community decided to extend the urban growth boundary and protect our open space and our lands for generations to come. And when our national government is failing to invest in our infrastructure and we see it every day with our bridges falling down and our roads in disrepair, this council and this community became the first city to have three smart stations in their city, which is also something we should be incredibly proud of. We're embarking on four major road projects in the coming year, we're revamping our parks and we're investing every single day in our infrastructure. And lastly, when we see what's happening in DC and nationally, when DC tries to divide us and tear us apart, this city comes together. And we have taken enormous steps as a council and as a city and as a community to increase transparency, to increase engagement, to bring more people into city government every single day. And we're going to keep helping each other. We're going to keep stepping up, whether it's fires that are the worst fires in California history or whether it's one of our own being lost to a deranged gunman, this community steps up and helps each other. And that's what's special about this community and that's the honor that I get to have to serve and we all get to have to serve to be here. And so more importantly than ever, cities and local governments have to lead. We have to lean into our values. So as mayor, there's three areas that I am hopeful that we continue to focus on. One, we have to protect our environment and fight climate change. And what does that mean? That means we have to give our city and our staff the support that they need and the resources they need to make sure that we reach our climate action goals. We also have to continue to be creative and push and make sure that we hit our goal of getting to 100% clean energy, which we can do. And we have to make sure that all of our citizens, every single one of you, every single person watching is engaged in this. There's something for every single one of you to do. We can increase deep green participation. We can have more people in electric vehicles and we need you to be a part of that and we're going to lean hard into this and continue to be a leader in the entire North Bay on sustainability and climate change, out here, right here in Nevada. Second, we need to continue to invest in our community and in ourselves. And what does that mean to invest in our community and ourselves? We need to finish key projects that are out there that are going to make downtown a place that all of us are excited to hang out with our friends and our kids and our grandkids and the whole community. And we're going to continue to revamp our parks, whether it's our dog parks or our parks for children, we're going to invest in those. We're going to, just like we approved the Hill Master Plan, we're going to make these projects happen and we're going to get them done in the near future. We're also going to invest in our small business community who are the backbone of our economy. We need to invest in them and they invest in us every single day and we need to invest in them. And we need to invest in our transportation systems, keep making sure that we're ready and prepared for the future to reduce traffic and reduce greenhouse gas emissions with our transportation systems. And lastly, we need to invest in our people. And that starts off with the people who invest in us and work for us every single day, our city staff. And we're going to continue to invest in them. And just to give you a quick example of why I think that's so important and what that means, this city had the opportunity to hire last year an incredible city manager, Regan Candelario, who then... Who then has brought in a fantastic executive staff, a really incredible executive staff, including having the brilliant idea of promoting Peggy Flynn to Assistant City Manager and has done incredible work. He also, in his first hire, was able to bring on the best, and I say this with all seriousness, the best police chief in Northern California, Chief Adam McGill. Now, what does that mean? Just as one small example, the year before I got elected, we lost seven police officers to other agencies who moved on and decided to go to other agencies. Because of the investment that we made in people and in our community, as of now, we are at full capacity in our police force and we haven't lost anyone since February. And we have the best police force in all of Marin County. And that's something that benefits the entire community. So we're going to continue, if you work for the city, would you please stand up for a second? If you work for the city, if you're a city employee, would you please stand up? We're going to continue to invest in you because you guys invest in us every single day. So thank you. Lastly, and this is something that I'm very passionate about and care deeply about, we have to increase opportunities for people to serve and for people to engage in our government. And this is not just something that I personally care about because I served in the Navy because of my conviction of service and I came home to serve this community. And it's not just because we have a rich history of service and public service, because we do have the best police and we do have the best firefighters in all Marin County and I stand by that statement. But it's because democracy depends on it. A functional government depends on citizens engaging and serving every single day. And as government at all levels, we failed to provide enough opportunities for people to serve. And we've done a lot. We've created new tools over the last two years for people to volunteer, we've created new systems for people to engage, but every single thing we do, whether it's our climate action plan or new city projects and anything we take on has got to include more engagement from the citizens. And it is my goal and it is all of our goal, I believe, that no citizen, no resident of Nevada should ever have to say, what can I do to make a difference? Because we are going to provide you that opportunity and we are going to make it clear that you're going to engage and we need you. So I am so excited to serve in this role. I'm so honored and humbled by this opportunity and I look forward to rolling up my sleeves and working with every single one of you, continue to make Nevada such a wonderful place to both raise a family and retire. Thank you so much. And with that, do we have any comments from other council members? I think we're going to start off with our new mayor pro tem, Mayor Pro Tem Drew.
Tonight is the night that we celebrate. We celebrate you all, we celebrate us all coming together. You can see there is a tremendous overflow of goodwill and good intention for the next year. I look back over the last two years and although whenever I looked at the video, I had that deja vu feeling that whenever you've seen a president and you've looked at him at the beginning of his term and then you see him at the end of the four years and you say, gosh, being president really ages a guy. I kind of had that reaction after only two years, but I hope it's not true. Over those two years, there's been labor negotiations, two budgets, an interim, city manager, a new city manager, two assistant city managers. We have done the business of the city and we have done it well. We have done it together, all of us. It is the people, it is the staff of the City of Nevada, it is the council, it is all of us working together. And it hasn't been necessarily smooth and it won't be necessarily smooth, but we will continue with goodwill into the next year. Thank you. It's a great honor for me to be your pro tem.
Are there comments from any of the council members? Councilmember Eklund?
Thank you very much. First, I wanted to congratulate Mayor Friday and Mayor Pro Tem Drew. It's going to be a fun year ahead achieving and trying to get done a lot of things that all of us want to accomplish. I first want to thank my mom, Winnie Eklund, for coming tonight and our dear family friend and my adopted sister, Ellen Castle. Really appreciate all the support that you've given to me over the years and just love the fact that, Mom, you're engaged in everything I do. You helped me so many times, it's just amazing. I just also want to thank all the Nevada voters from the bottom of my heart for giving me the opportunity to continue to serve our wonderful community of Nevada. We walked door to door, phoned thousands of Nevada voters, we talked to neighbors in every corner of Nevada and I am sincerely impressed by how much people in our community care and are willing to contribute to our community. I heard loud and clear that the Nevada voters want to make sure that future development is compatible with our neighborhoods and with our small town character. We want to keep our community safe. We want to make sure that we preserve our hillsides and our ridge lines, open space, fix our roads and make safety improvements to our cross rocks and walking paths throughout Nevada. We want to keep our city physically strong and a downtown that is truly a destination place and to overall to improve our quality of life that we enjoy every day and we're so fortunate to have. Thanks to you and to your support, that's exactly what I intend to do over the next five years. This victory really belongs to all of the volunteers who worked so tirelessly to reach this goal. Really appreciate your endorsements, your contributions, displaying campaign signs, talking with your friends and neighbors and walking precincts. That's really hard to do and you think that we have over 19,000 frequent voter households, that's a lot of houses to walk to in this city. My appreciation of all of the wonderful volunteers and hardworking folks on this campaign is just beyond words. I also want to thank all the voters who took the time to become informed on the issues and to give me their vote. I'm honored to have won your trust and to represent you on the city council. And for those who did not vote for me, I will continue to work hard to earn your confidence. We may still disagree from time to time, but we are all united in our love for Nevada and our desire to make it an even better city. Where there are challenges, there are opportunities and I'm confident that Nevada can prevail in finding solutions to issues that are in our community. We can do it together. Our community has so much going for it, especially if we are wise in using our limited resources to really maximize the opportunities for our future. Over the years, I've been really privileged to have been able to get to know many of you and have had the opportunity to work with you on a day-to-day basis. Public service is an honor and it's a privilege and I'm so grateful and proud to have earned your support. I'm looking forward to working with our new seated council and working together with the community as a team to achieve great results. I'm ready to also roll up my sleeves and get to work and I just want to say from the deepest part of my heart, thank you to the City of Nevada. the deepest part of my heart, thank you to the City of Nevada.
Councilmember Lukin?
Thank you, Mayor Friday. I'll keep my comments brief. Tonight really is about celebration, and I'm also told there is cake awaiting us. But first off, I want to congratulate Councilmember Eklund and Councilmember Athas on your reelection, and I also want to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem Drew and Mayor Friday on your appointment to both of those seats. Josh, I really am encouraged by the words that you just shared. I know that our city is in good hands under your leadership, and I'm very excited for this year coming forward. I'll tell you the same thing I told Mayor Athas when she moved into the seat, that if I run into constituents with easy issues, or congratulations, I will gladly take credit for it, but if they have difficult issues, then I will refer them to the mayor.
So with that, I think we're ready for dessert. Are there, is there anyone we would like to close in memory of for tonight?
I'd like to close in memory of Ed Lee tonight.
Yeah, that's, I was going to make that suggestion, too.
Okay, so we're going to close tonight's meeting in memory of the former mayor of San Francisco, Ed Lee, who passed away today. We're now adjourned.